It is six thirty-two, I believe, six thirty-two. We'll call this meeting to order our Board of Business Meeting. Um, here, October twenty-third, Monday, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you, everybody, for joining our business meeting of Board of Directors. Uh, we are, we will start with salute to the flag.
My due question, Mr. United States, but there. You do your public, publications stand one nation under one bill.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, roll call, please.
The sock.
President.
Right.
President.
Ms. Richardson.
President.
Ms. Hopkins. Mr. Tom.
President.
The talent, yeah. Mr. Henry.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Ivory.
I'm present.
Present. Thank you very much. Um, comments, announcements from the board, you know, I always like to leave us with a quote. Um, as we are getting more into our beginning of the year, just want to say, um, thank you, everybody, for their patience. Uh, with us helping, with us resolving some corrective actions that we, you know, struggle with at the beginning of the year. Um, I always believe in one percent better, and I believe every day we're trying our best to do one percent better, and thank you very much for that. Uh, with regard to, um, any announcement, I just want to say congratulations, um, to all of our sports team. Um, I also want to just say congratulations to the girls soccer team, um, being, them being out here and just formulating a team. Um, I really, really appreciate that, and I want to say, you know, also too, congratulations to our boys' football team. Um, even though at this time we did not play our last game, but I just want you guys to know that you still are awesome team. And no matter where you stand, um, in the Del Vow, we still look forward to, uh, seeing you play and look forward to all our graduates. That will be moving on, um, and playing in college. Next, we will go to the, um, superintendent's report.
Good evening, board members, and good evening to those of you who are attending our meeting tonight. Thank you for being here. Uh, this evening, I do have two areas that I would like to provide an update on. Uh, I will begin with, uh, special thanks and then end up with district and community announcements. Under special thanks, again, it gives me great pleasure to thank, uh, those teachers and individuals who have submitted information to Don't Choose. And you can see that, um, during the month of October, we have projects totaling more than sixty-five hundred dollars that have been funded. So congratulations to these individuals, and thank you, Don't Choose, for supporting public schools. Next, I would like to recognize our principals. This is National Principals Month. Uh, I firmly believe that great schools have great principals, and we did acknowledge their, um, hard work and efforts on this past Thursday at our principal's meeting. So congratulations and thank you to our principals. Moving forward to, um, district and community announcements this Thursday, the, um, Penwood High School, Main Avenue Campus will be having their college fair. Uh, we have more than sixty participating secondary schools and colleges. I ask that our community and those members, um, of the public, please come out to support this event. Even if your child is not a graduate, maybe a senior, there's information that you can learn early on so that you can prepare for the next step in post-secondary education. Uh, and those are the colleges that will be participating on this coming Thursday. Next, I just want to remind everyone that on November the second, we will be hosting our state of schools event. It's going to be exciting and exciting event. Our students will be showcased and we will highlight the efforts from our strategic plan. It will be at six P M. At the Penwood High School. We are starting promptly at six P M. Right now, we are already at eighty percent of the school's capacity for those who have a technical book, for those who are attending. So you'll see the Q R code. We're asking that you please RSVP because we do want to plan for those people who will be in attendance and make sure that we have ample seating. And we are able to support our guests appropriately. So again, that's November the second, two thousand and twenty-three, at six o'clock P M. Next, we are having our athletic complex ribbon cutting ceremony and the launch of our community capital campaign on November the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, this will be at four o'clock P M., and we will be meeting directly at the athletic complex field on Bailey Road, also known as currently Curd Field. So we are asking you to please, again, let us know if you will be in attendance so that we can plan appropriately for you. Next, um, I do want to encourage all of those who can to please come out, uh, and be a part of our community conversations on school safety. Uh, the first session will be held this coming Saturday at eleven o'clock A M. At Penwood Middle School, and the next session will be held on Monday, October thirtieth, at six o'clock P M. We're having two different sessions. The topics are exactly the same. The agenda is exactly the same, but we want to make sure that our community has an opportunity to attend either one of these sessions. Given some recent events that have occurred in our community, I think it's very important for us to come together and have a conversation about school safety. Uh, I firmly believe that our first priority as an educational institution is to provide opportunities for students to learn. We also have to make sure that they are safe, but we also need our community to help support us in that endeavor. So again, please come out and support these events because we really want to hear their voice. Madam, uh, President, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. B. Koe. There are a few things that I forgot and I wanted to mention in my report. So I wanted to say also congratulations to our indoor track team as well. Um, they have been winning gold medals left and right, and if you follow their, um, Instagram page, you see a lot of things that are going on, a lot of races that, uh, these young men and women have been winning. So I just wanted to make sure I shout out to them. Also, I did have the opportunity, um, to, um, be a part of the P S B A Leadership Conference. Um, uh, we, it was Jen Hoff, uh, Ms. I, Wadia Ivory, um, Ms. Joy Hopkins. We had the opportunity just to let everybody know the leadership conferences, all school board, all school board members, or let's say leaders, presidents, vice presidents. Um, they come to, we went to the Calharrid Resort in the Poconos, and it was at the convention center. And during that time, we're there and we're learning about how other school boards are attacking certain problems or just how they're navigating through certain things. Um, I was very, very impressed by Whisso, Whisso Hickin High School. I had the opportunity to sit in the session with them. Um, they're doing a lot of work on, um, equity and, um, diversity, which was really interesting to me. Um, Board of Directors had this opportunity to not just congregate with other school boards, but really, really educate themselves. There are some things that school boards have done that we have not done already, and we, you know, exchange information and we find out different things. So I was really happy about being a part of that, and we came back with a lot of knowledge, a lot of information that we'll be taking back, um, to our board, our other Board of Directors and also Dr. B. Koe's. Also, on Sunday, on Sunday, I just want to say, um, give a shout out to, um, the Lan- Lansdowne Council and the Lansdowne Mayor. Um, the cent, what we know as the center, uh, was renamed as the Rat Curry, um, Center. Um, and they dedicated that to Rat Curry. Um, that's where he grew up. If everybody understands, uh, the area on Bartram Avenue. Um, it's one twelve Bartram Avenue. That's the address. Um, it's a play, it's a basketball court and it's like playground behind it. Um, they dedicated that because Rat lived on Bartram Avenue, and he played basketball on that court. That's really where he learned. Had the opportunity to, his whole family was out there. Um, Jim came out, Representative Lansdowne came out, um, Ms. Ivory's, um, she sent the representative out. It was just really, really good. Um, I'm not sure if you made it or not. Okay, you might have made, I didn't see, I didn't get out.
Supposed to be.
I spoke to you. Mr. Right, Mr. Right was out there as well.
He had a dog with.
Yes, I did have five dog with me. So everyone was out there celebrating, and council members were out there, um, from all over. It was, uh, Chester, Saint Joe's. He had people from Saint Joe's come out and speak, and we really got knowledge on Rat stomping grounds, you know, and how his mother raised him and grew up. Dr. B. Koe was definitely there, but just want to say thank you to the mayor, um, of Lansdowne for putting that all together and doing something so nice like that for the family. Okay? So thank you very much. Just wanted to conclude with that. All right, next, what will be?
Dr. B. Koe, can you send us your presentation? The board, as we say that.
Sure, I will, but.
Can we go?
No, 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 I was gonna ask a question.
Oh, yes.
Uh, uh, on the, uh, for the safety, uh.
The safety meeting?
Yes. It said RSVP. Can we be assured that if someone didn't respond to that, that they could still be a part of this?
Yes, anyone can still be a part. It just helps us with planning, but yes, anyone can be a part.
Oh, because that's, you know, you say RSVP, it's, oh, you know, I didn't respond, so I can't go. So, but they can be a part of this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. All is welcome to the, to those meetings. All right. Um, next, we'll go to, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three?
So move second.
Any, any comments, questions, or concerns? All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All those. All those opposed? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the business meeting of September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three?
So move.
Second.
Any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those against? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the committee meeting of the whole October sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three?
So move.
Okay. Um, any comments, questions, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Anybody against? All those against? All right, here, you're seeing that. All right, next, we're going to go to our lovely student representatives. Um, is Mr. Van Gora here today?
Oh, yes, I am present.
All right, hello, Mr. Van Gora. You have the floor. Mr. Van Gora is our twelfth grade representative for us, from our student reps.
Yeah, um, good evening, board. Um, well, first of all, I would like to start with, um, always positive. Um, I would just want to give a kind of a special shout out to, um, our principal at Paul High School, Mrs. Chicago, for always being so involved in our school. And it never goes unacknowledged. I was talking to him while we was talking about things that we could do better, things that we can improve on, and he's just so involved in our school. I loved it. Um. I would also like to, um, kind of like implement, because I know at, uh, so at lunch, we kind of have like our snack line, and they kind of like give us like a healthy diet, which I, I really do love. Because it is good for the school, you know, for people's diet, and it like kind of makes them feel like, you know, that it, it makes us feel as though that we have an option to stay healthy. So I kind of wanted to implement on that, kind of like for us, again, like maybe like bring it back to water bottles, because we used to kind of have water bottles during lunch, and we kind of, they kind of took that away from us, which is understandable. But kind of when I come back to that, it kind of get, oh, water bottles during lunch. And, um, do have an update from the, um, the app that we used to use, uh, what we still do use, the app that we use. It had.
Um, Mr. Van Gora, you broke up?
No, we lost him. We lost him. We lost.
Oh, he dropped off, okay. There he is, in front of that. We can hear you. Are you referring to the E, the E Hall passes?
Yeah, the E Hall passes, yeah. It kind of got better now, just because I feel like in the first, the first beginning of the week of school, people kind of like, what this thing is always and stuff like that. But it kind of died down. Now people are less in the hallways, more so in the classroom, and I feel like it's definitely been improved. And then I feel like it's probably more of a Wi-Fi thing, but we definitely like adapt to it.
So it's good.
That is all for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Um, also, also, Mr. Van Gora, from your last meeting, uh, we are still working on, just to let you know, for the athletic gear, the sport wear for athletic gear. I know that's something that you brought up, so I'll be able to report more information to you at next board business meeting with that. And then also, um, are you adjusting to the new bell schedule?
Um. I am. I will say I'm trying. It is a work in progress because kind of like kind of a senior, and that senioritis kind of comes in. But, you know, it's a, it's a step-by-step day process, but yeah, I am adjusting to it.
Okay, no problem. That was something that you brought up in the last meeting. I just want to make sure I circle back and ask you how, uh, we are adjusting to the new bell schedule. And no senioritis, no senioritis. Thank you very much for your input. We are going to go next to our eleventh grade, um, representative, Ms. Jada Wise. Is she, she on? Okay, Ms. Wise, doesn't seem like Ms. Wise is on, so we're going to go next to our next, uh, representative, Ms. Morgan Ask, Askew Green, our representative from tenth grade.
Uh, yes, hello, I'm just, you know, I don't really have anything to report right now. The buses, you know, being late picking us up, that has gotten better. We now have a, what seems like a permanent driver for seven oh five, and you know, it's, we're not being held up as long. And the metal detectors, obviously, except for today, but that was for a good reason. Other than that, everything is pretty good. I don't have anything negative to report.
Is the app working well for you as well?
Yeah, it's getting better.
Okay, awesome. I'll be able to tell you more information about the tapestries, uh, too, for the gym. Um, I'm working with Ms. Jean Cody on that, so I'll get back to you on that. So we can have one for Rat to represent. Okay? Thank you very much for that. Um, next, we're going to go to our ninth grade representative, our newest member, um, Eli Fader.
Hi, um, so I'm having the opposite problem where my busing is actually getting worse. So for example, last, last week, um, there were two days where the bus was fifty minutes late. So we, it cut into our first periods. We have homeroom and then first period, and so it was like, um, seven fifty something when we, um, actually got into the building.
Yes.
Um, and also the bus, like, is regularly twenty-ish minutes late. So I'm not sure if that's because of, like, um, what it says we're supposed to be there. What I was told, um, because I didn't receive a letter about busing, um, it, we were supposed to be there at six forty-seven. Um, but it's still twenty minutes late, so I'm not sure if that, we got the time wrong, but we were also told the time.
Okay, um, what bus number is that?
Seven oh three.
Okay, I was on the email exchange with that information. The bus, the bus depot did respond back stating that they were working on a corrective action. What I'll do is I'll follow up, um, tonight with an email and find out, find out, follow up and ask questions from that email and find out this is going to be resolved. Um, so you're told to be at the bus at six forty-seven?
Hmm.
All right.
Yeah.
Mr. Darnell's on there and Bob's on there, um, Mr. Popple's on there as well, I think, or just Darnell is. So six forty-seven is the pickup time.
That's, yeah, that's what I was told.
Okay, that's what you were told, and you're saying it's coming fifty minutes after that.
That was, it happened twice last week.
Twice last week.
That's been the latest so far.
Okay. Miss, sorry for that. Yes.
Mr. Dean has his hand raised.
Oh, great. Thank you. Mr. Dean, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Thank you, President Boykin. So I'm happy to report that the challenges that we were having with seven oh three is because seven oh three was covering, um, and doubling up for Route seven oh five as well. So now that seven oh five has a permanent route, uh, we do expect the seven oh three should be, um, excuse me, has a permanent driver. We do expect the seven oh three should be, um, the route should be improving in the, in this week and the coming weeks. Uh, but what we will do is we will monitor seven oh three directly this week, um, both pickups and drop-offs. And then, uh, President Boykin, as we can report back to you at the end of the week about the, um, the efficiency and the timeliness of this route.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dean, so that'll be handled by Mr. Dean, and, um, hopefully this week, I want to say, knock on wood, you don't have any issues, okay?
I just had a suggestion, like, if it's possible to move the, like, the time we're supposed to be there later, um, because it just, I don't know what's happening with that.
Well, well, he's explaining that the issue was they were doubling routes, so there shouldn't be any issues now. Um, but I don't know, Mr. Dean, is that make, you know, if that makes sense to do, if you want to push the time later, I'm not sure, but that's something that she's putting a suggestion out there.
We'll look at the route times. A lot of the, a lot, just so you know, that a lot of our, um, particularly our high school buses will also pick up from middle school and then elementary school. So it's a cascading, um, it's a cascading process, but whatever we can do to adjust times, uh, we definitely will look into it, so I absolutely will take it under advisement.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dean. Um, Eli, anything else?
No, that was the main issue.
Okay, also, um, last time you reported with regard to not hearing activities or not being able to hear much of announcements.
That's changed. I've gotten like a few emails from the, our principal about, um, activities, and it's gotten better.
Got it. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. Thank you very much for my student reps. Next, uh, we'll go to our special awards. There are no special awards tonight. Then we will go to our public comments on agenda items. So anyone from the public, um, online or in here in the, in the room. If you had any, um, comments for the agenda items, we ask that you come to the podium, state your first and last name and the area that you represent, and ask your, uh, make your comment or question. Anybody see anything?
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Wa, our principal?
Um, how?
Just as Joe Williams.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, yeah. Oh, could be, yes. Mr. Please, uh, Mr. Williams, you have the floor.
Hey, guys, I think I, um, did that by mistake, but good evening to everyone.
I was like, that's a, all right. Hello, Mr. Williams.
How you doing?
We're doing good.
Good, good.
All right, so there does not look to be any public, um, comments on agenda. So next, we're going to go to communications. Mr. Kaufman, do we have any communications?
Uh, none at this time.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we're going to go to our, our committee reports. Uh, first, we have our community relationship report. It's going to be read by our chair, Ms. Luella Richardson.
Good evening, everyone. A one is the American Education Week, November the thirteenth through seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. There's a motion recommended action. It's a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-three American Education Week Proclamation. So there's a proclamation. I'm not going to read it, but the week of November the fourteenth through the eighteenth is the annual observant of American Education Week. So we need, um, the recommended action will be a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-three American Education Week Proclamation. A two, the young men and women in charge, the seventeenth Annual College and Career Expo. The young men and women in charge will host this eighteenth Annual College and Career Expo on Saturday, November the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. At Bee Reed Henderson High School, that's in Westchester, from nine A M. until two P M. You will have representatives from colleges and universities, the corporate and the community partners will be available to interact. So the topics, you see the various topics that will be discussed by the university representatives and also topics. Partly covered by corporate and business partners. So if you have questions, you can contact them at six ten three four two eight four four. A three, Delaware County Health Department Community Events. The Delaware County Health Department is offering a series of free events to the community members on October sixteenth. There will be mammogram screening at the Wellness Center, which is located in Yaden, and there are often a series of drive-through community fluke. Plenics and Brumall, Essington, Essington and Yaden. A four, community conversation on school safety. The William Penn School District is in partnership with the Delaware County Intermediate Union. Unit will host community conversation regarding school safety. This is a very important meeting because of what is going on, safety. We want to protect our students in any way we can, so we are reaching out to have these meetings. The first one is Saturday, October the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, at the Penwood Middle School, eleven A M. to twelve thirty P M. The second meeting will take place Monday, October the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at Penwood High School. And that will be from six o'clock P M. to seven thirty P M. So encourage the community to come out. It's very important. Safety is the number one issue right now. A five, Penwood High School student named Student of the Month by the Rotary Club. We're proud to say, Penwood High School, Gianna Bryson Gamble was selected as Student of the Month for September, two thousand and twenty-three. Students are chosen based on academic performance, leadership skills, and participation in extracurricular activities. Congratulations, Gianna. Keep up the good work. That concludes my.
Thank you very much, Ms. Richardson. Um, from the board, comments, questions, and concerns?
Second, because we actually have a second.
We do. Can I get a second? Yeah. Um, and be, yeah, and then comments, questions, and concerns. So, um, one thing I want to say with, um, just want to confirm. A three, uh, it says October sixteenth. Is that date correct or, because October sixteen has passed, so I'm wondering, um.
I'm going to defer to Ms. Abrahamsen.
I would show it.
I'm gonna, I don't want to turn on that.
Okay. I was just asking, because I know we usually talk about future things, so, okay, no problem. Um, also, I just want to encourage everyone to please support, um, the young, um, young, um, men and women in charge, uh, college fair event. That is a great program that our school offers, but is also, um, STEM-based and I would say STEAM-based, so we really, really need to go out. If your child has any interest in any type of the sciences or engineering or arts, please, please go to this college fair, because those are the type of colleges that will definitely, um, be out there representing. And just doubling back on the school safety. You know, we really, really need people to come out. If you have any questions about safety, any, we want your voice to be heard, or you have suggestions, please come out. You know, this is the time where we come together as a community and we, uh, talk about and discuss things and then take things back to the board. And the board tries to implement or just review things as well on different suggestions or corrective actions that we can, um, put in place. So please, everyone, all, all boroughs, please come out to this meeting. Um, any other comments, questions, or concerns on our community relations agenda? All right, hearing, seeing, none. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, next, we're going to go to our education committee, um, agenda, read by our chair, Ms. Valerie Cook-Hemry.
Good evening, everyone. Our education committee agenda, B one, agreement with Delaware Valley Assessment and Learning. Um, the motion is to approve the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four agreement between the William Penn School District and the Delaware Valley Learning and Assessment, as indicated below. The agreement is subject to the district solicitor review and approval of the form and content. And below is listed the details related to the assessments that they will be able to implement. B two, release and settlement agreement, and the motion is to approve the release and settlement agreement negotiated between the William Penn School District and the parent of the student, as indicated below. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Val, Valerie Cook-Hemry. Um, can I get a second?
Second.
Um, any comments, questions, and concerns? Uh, all right.
Yes, Boykin?
Yep.
Yep. I have a question. Um, for B one, um, for this assessment, is this something that the D C I U also offers, or is this something separate from the D C I U?
I believe this is something separate. This is a statement that we would use in the event that we need that this particular, um, support in our district. And if the D C I U did offer it, um, we would not necessarily need to work with this entity.
Okay, thank you. We don't have to pay anything right now, as if we use the service.
It's all right. You pay for if you use it.
Okay, okay. All right, Ms. Ivory, you're fine? Okay.
Yes.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, hearing, you're seeing none. We're going to go to our personnel committee agenda. I mean, I'm sorry, not personnel. No, I was right. I was right. See, I just got it from Ms. White. Personnel committee agenda, Lord of Blues, uh, this, Red Baron Chair, Ms. Wadia Ivory.
Good evening, everyone. C one, there are no retirements listed. C two, no resignations. C three, appointments. Uh, David Hill, Administration Technology Support Specialist at the Administration Building, start date ten to two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, professional staff, Zakaya Toray, Instructional Assistant at Penwood High School, welcome to the district. C four, change, there are no changes in assignment. C five, leave of absence, there are none. C eight, there are no mentors. C seven, miscellaneous appointments. C eight, tenure awards, there are none. C nine, there are. C eight, tenure awards, there are none, C nine, there are no salary track. C eleven, there are no, there are no modifications, C twelve, additions to the agenda, we have a few retirements. Uh, Javon Oaks, Principal at Bell Avenue, effective one January second, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Oaks has been with the district since August twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen. Uh, administration staff, Vila Abdul Latif, teacher at Pendwood High School, effective June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Ms. Latif has been with the district since August twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen. And support staff, Ms. Andretta Bond, the secretary at the Administration Building, Ms. Bond has been with the district since uh, twenty thirteen, her effective date is eleven three twenty twenty-three, and Diane Stevens, Secretary at Colwin. Ms. Stevens has been with the district since twenty nineteen. We would just like to wish all of them well in their retirement, and thank you for your years of service, and we wish you many more years of enjoyment. C two, resignations. C three, appointments. C four, changes in assignment. C five, leaves of absence. C six, mentors. C seven, miscellaneous appointments. C eight, tenure awards, and I'll just read this, Stephen Exberg, Pendwood Middle School, Kelly Gamble, Walnut Street, Samia Hamden, Pendwood High School, Jace Watkins, Pendwood Middle School, Matthew Haley, Pendwood Middle School, congratulations on your tenure. C nine, salary track changes. And that con- concludes my report, Miss Boykins.
Thank you very much, Miss Ivory. Um, can I get a second?
That's.
All right, comments, questions, and concerns? Um, I just wanna say, um, to, uh, Ms. Oaks, Principal Oaks, we wish you well in your retirement. And, um, very, thank you for all that you, um, did at Bell, and, um, you know, definitely, uh, was a climate change, you being there, so we just, we just wanna say we appreciate you and, um, wish you nothing but success in your next step in retirement. And I also just wanna say to Ms. Bond, um, I know her personally, I went to school with her son. Uh, we graduated two thousand and two, so Ms. Bond, thank you also for your years and years of service as well. Um, definitely you'll be missed, but we appreciate your, the, just your demeanor, your presence, um, attitude and positivity. You know, coming through the front door, she's always smiling and always greeting you, was, she's just such a pleasant person, so I just wanna say thank you for everything that you've done. Um, also, yeah?
Um, I, uh, wanna, uh, I, um, also say Ms. Bond has been a lovely human being to open that door from time to time, to again, and just to see her loveliness, um, I wish her really well in retirement. I'm sad to see, uh, Dr. Lewis go, are we advertising that position?
Yes, we are.
God bless, and, um, I ask that the, uh, school board directors give the resume of Ms. McHugh, uh, please. Are the, um, hmm? Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions, or concerns? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All? Online people?
Aye.
All those against? All right, hearing none. All right, we'll go to our property committee agenda, Red Bar Chair, Mr. Jan Tom.
Thank you, Madam President. The evening's property committee consists of G one, Athletic Complex, the motion is to approve the name of the new athletic complex. The new athletic complex will now be called the Rapp S Curry Athletic Complex, Curio. D two, Bus Patrol. Motion is to approve the Bus Patrol Agreement. The Bus Patrol is a program that tickets drivers if they do not stop for a bus with a stop sign app. D three, change orders for WB Evans and East Lansdown Elementary, the motion is to approve within budget change order three, four, and five for East Lansdown and WB Evans. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tom, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any comments, questions, concerns? So the, the Bus Patrol is just a program that we're agreeing that to do, basically, okay?
Bus Patrol Program is a program that's, um, funded by, uh, it funded itself.
Oh, okay.
And when drivers drive past a stop sign that's now, take the panel, they're fixed picture.
Oh, okay.
Within our boroughs, and then our boroughs will go after them to give them a ticket for not yielding to a bus.
Okay.
And then they will then be, uh, fined, and that will fund the program.
Oh, awesome, awesome. Okay, thank you very much for explaining that. Um, any comments, questions, or concerns? Yep, Mister, uh, Richardson?
I know, I might be a little late with this, but do you have the numbers for the change orders or not?
Not on, not on me.
Mister Dean, um, do you have the, um, the numbers or the amount for the change orders uh, that's related to, um, the WB Evans and East Lansdown Project?
Yes, I can pull them up if you give me two seconds.
Okay, no problem.
But.
Yeah, the, so in our, i- i- in our packet, um, Ms. Richardson, um, the change orders are, they were, um, in the file, if you clicked on them, but he can, um, I guess we just want the total amount, you don't have to go through each one, Mister Dean, but they should, okay, Mister Kaufman, it was in our notes, but he's bringing it up.
Uh, nineteen thousand, twenty-nine thousand, and seventeen thousand, respectively.
Nineteen, you heard that?
Nineteen, twenty-nine, and seventeen.
They're, they're actually.
Thank you.
And our cat, what's our, I'm sorry, what's our, we're, um, still, our cat, our number for the change order for that project? Uh, then we set aside a certain amount for?
Yeah, we set aside about a million dollars.
Okay, so let us make sure we're. Oh, yeah, we're in our limits, yes.
I guess I have a question. Or we could really monitor and encourage him not to follow up, we have the change orders.
Yeah, so all of the change orders are, when they open something up and there's something structurally that needs to be fixed. Otherwise, if they do not fix it, it's potentially that, you know, could collapse and injure students or community members if they, uh, for example, walk on the steps, or in the other, the chapel is a old exhaust shaft or boiler that wasn't in the drawings or schematics anywhere.
Pardon me, but we cannot hear Mister Kaufman.
Sorry, um, I said there was items such as like, uh, structural integrity of underneath the stairs, once they, uh, did the demo for the new, um, uh, ADA accessible ramps and things like that, that they needed to redo, so that the, um, ramps and stairs were structurally sound, so that they would not collapse, um, things like that, that they couldn't know without, uh, opening up the structures for.
All right, but I guess my question, in the future, would it be a little more diligent to find out, you know, that that should have been in the plans and not we constantly come up with change orders?
So what he's, what he's saying is they would not have been able to catch those things while they were building, so once it was built, then they realized, okay, we, we need to make some adjustments.
I understand that, well, I've been doing this for a long time, that's, that usually, the same language they give us all the time, that they didn't discover it. And then when they finally discover it, then
Okay.
it becomes a huge plan, then it then become continuous. I have no problem with change order, it is not every month.
Okay. So he wants us to, if you could send them the message about being more proactive on finding things of that nature?
Sure.
So we don't have to open things up again and have it to pay this amount of money, that's what he's trying to, that's, that's basically what you're trying to.
That's what I'm saying.
Be a little more diligent.
Yeah, cause usually you start a copycat type of type, type of relationship, they see one person get, get away with it, and then next thing you know, there's a follow-up, and then we got a huge budget. So we can just, in other words, if there's a need it, I'm for that, but I don't wanna see copycats.
But, yeah, we would communicate with our contractors and.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Right.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Is there a liaison between us and the conductor when this is brought out?
Yes.
That goes over this and say, okay, this is needed as opposed to not being needed?
Yes, Mister Kaufman and Mister Dean handles that, so any communications with our contractors?
It also typically will go to the architect first as the initial decision maker, so the architect or engineer, or which one are we using on this one? Architect will be the first person to look at the contractor's request and say, is that legit or not? So it's not before it even gets to Bob or, or Darnell.
And we've had times where Bob's caught things and went back and got a second, a sec- second suggestion from another architect or something to make sure that that architect is not, um, missing something.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments, questions, or concerns, and I wanna say thank you, Board of Directors, for those questions, uh, within property, very important, um.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, hearing, we're seeing none. Um, next, we're gonna go to our Budget and Finance, uh, uh, Committee Agenda, read by our Chair, Ms. uh, Jen Hall.
Thank you, Miss Boykins, D one, pleasure to the board, E two, Mr. Bills, and that is all this evening.
All right, thank you very much, um, can I get a second?
Second.
Um, all, any comments, questions, or concerns? All right, hearing, we're seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, next, we're gonna go to our Policy Committee Agenda, read by our Chair, Ms. Joanna Hopkins.
I'm just, oh, unfortunately, um, the November fifteenth budget meeting was left off the agenda. Um, and that's correct.
The November fifteenth budget meeting is not on the agenda, okay?
Just.
So we need to make a correction to the agenda?
So you can just announce it.
Yeah, we'll just announce.
Okay, November fifteenth is our next Budget Committee Meeting.
Correct.
Okay, it is in there?
It is there, oh, sorry, it's on the bottom of the page.
It's in there, it's on the bottom of the page, okay, thank you, it's all right, all right, thank you, um.
My apologies.
Thank you, Miss, Miss Matthias, said it right. All right, uh, next, we're gonna go to our, uh, policy. Did we have a vote, did I vote?
Yes.
Yes, I did. All right, next, we're gonna go to our Policy Committee Agenda, uh, read by our Chair, Ms. Joanna Hopkins.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, second reading of the amended policies, two forty-six and two fifty-one. Um, two forty-six is, um, the school wellness uh, under the heading of, um, pupils, and policy two fifty-one um, is in regards to students experiencing homing, homelessness, foster care, and other educational instability, again, which is under the heading of pupils. The motion is to approve the second reading and adoption of the William Penn School District amended policy. Two forty-six, school wellness, and two fifty-one, students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational instability to inter such reading into the minutes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hopkins. Um, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, hearing, we're seeing none. Next, we're gonna go to our Solicitors Report.
Uh, no report, Madam President.
Okay, we love that. All right, uh, next, we're gonna go to our Chair from our Delaware County Community College, uh, Representative. Oh. Lia, I'm sorry, he is not a chair, he is a liaison, let me put this in my notes, liaison, okay? So Mister Wright, uh, do you have a report for us?
The only report I have is a follow-up, that we have an appreciation dinner, uh, that will take place Wednesday, October twenty-fifth.
Yes, it's coming up, guys.
Right, so that's coming days of that, that's right, it's down on one, South Media Lawn Road, Media, Pennsylvania. The reception's at six PM, the dinner would be at six thirty in our cafeteria. Uh, I'm pretty sure everybody RSVP, and, uh, we have attended a guest so far, the hundred and thirty-eight participants.
Everybody wears their Sunday's best will be there.
Yeah, that's right.
October twenty-fifth. All right, thank you very much, uh, Mister Wright.
You're welcome.
All right, next, we're gonna go to our Delaware County Intermediate Union, uh, Ms. Joanna Hopkins.
Madam President, I don't have a report this evening, I'm just meeting.
Okay, no problem, we'll see, we'll circle back in November, it's a little quiet over there, so y'all about to go on break soon anyway, right? Now, y'all have a meeting in December too? Are y'all, okay, all right, cool, thank you very much. Um, next, we'll go to, um, our liaison for Delaware County Legislative Council, see, I'm, I'm working on words.
All right, thank you, Miss Boykins, um, it's slow moving in Harrisburg. Uh, think quicksand, um, we still don't know about Level Up. Uh, there is, uh, there's a new school code bill, HB twenty-seven, uh, which I sent, uh, to Dr. Deco to Miss Boykins, uh, a bill analysis of, uh, they threw everything but your kitchen sink in that's one, um, so we have to sort of watch. Um, PlanCon is in the quicksand, not moving anywhere as right now. Uh, it's, uh, it's pretty much gridlock, um, so keep up your calls to your legislators. Ask them about Level Up funding. Uh, we have a hole in our budget because we assumed they were gonna fund it, and they did not. Um, so, uh, keep your fingers crossed that they get to serious work very soon. Sorry, I don't have that news.
Thank you very much. Old business, do we have any old business? No, okay, new business? Yes, we do. So our new business is reappointment to the Board of Trustees of Delaware County Community College. And the motion is to approve the reappointment of Ms. Marilyn A. Spicer and Dr. David H. Grossman to the Board of Trustees of Delaware County Community College for a six-year term ending June thirty of twenty twenty-nine. Uh, the terms of Delaware County Community College Trustees um, expired in June thirty, on June thirty of twenty twenty-three, so both parties, um, has requested a reappointment, the new six-year term. And the Liaison Committee supports this reappointment. Uh, the responsibility for selecting the college trustees lies with sponsor, our sponsoring school districts, so that's why we're making this move. Uh, these people have been in this, uh, this will be their second term in this position. So, um, first and foremost, I get a second?
Aye.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, any comments, questions, or concerns at this time? All right, uh, Mister Wright, uh, do you have, do you know the, any of these, uh?
No, I was looking.
Okay.
They were probably would be at the dinner.
Okay, okay, yeah, so we could ask more questions and, you know, get to know them more, um, at the dinner as well on Wednesday. All right, so can I get, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those again?
History.
All right, hearing that, so let's make sure that we all make, make ourselves acquainted with these people. Uh, Mister Spicer, uh, Mrs. Ms. Spicer and Dr. Grossman, while we're there, so just have it on your mind to make sure we introduce ourselves to those two, uh, people. Um, yes, so, public comments for non-agenda items at this time, Miss Faber, you have the floor, you can come on, step up?
Evening, reading the paper, I'm the resident of Lansdowne, Shore and Tipton. Um, just, um, well, one comment, I know we talked about the boss name, just wanna go on the record again, to say, we're heading into the winter month. Mine's starting to get really nervous, I realize we're at eighty degrees this weekend, but, you know.
Feel free to have some, if you want.
It was, it was cold tonight, so we didn't, we didn't want that, I should, I know, but. Uh, and then just two announcements of my night. One is, Arthur Avenue is hosting a Slappy Book Fair, they have an opening evening next twenty day, November first, from six to eight, I believe. Uh, open to the community, so if you, if you're either ready to do Slappy Book Fairs, or you're not in the district, it's open to anyone, any parents, or not, but get, do the quality, but. Um, and then one other call is, uh, the homeschool has been, or for the high school, has been trying to get parents out to La La on Lansdowne Avenue in the morning, just to have a presence there. Um, I work at home maybe one day a week or less, um, so I try to get out there when I, when I'm around, but anyone else, again, community members, maybe a parent, just. Just to, for the kids who know that there was a presence there, for the staff, they, we appreciate someone to be in the, you know, the premises. Who, again, support, make sure our kids are making those right decisions and getting themselves.
Thank you for that, um, I just had a question, what time?
Yes.
For Wawa, yes, what time will you need someone there? Seven to seven thirty, okay? All right. Any o- other questions about that?
Uh, no, I just wanted the book fair, what time is the book fair?
Six to eight.
Six to eight. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for those, uh, that information, um. Especially the Wawa, uh, seven to seven thirty, maybe some school board directors can come on out. Those that aren't busy, you know, in the morning time, but thank you very much for that.
Question about Wawa, how's everything proceeding? In regards to our students going there, does everything, has the climate improved, or is it still where it is, or is it still closing down?
They're not still, Wawa is still not closing down, I think the climate, um. Is, is okay, I think it's, it's settled, I think the principal has taken the necessary actions to support. Um, the establishment as well as to support the local law enforcement, so they are working together, uh, on that. On that endeavor, I know sometimes he has been at the Wawa as well as other administrators from the school building. So I think the appropriate actions are being taken, and continuous conversations are going on with law enforcement.
Is anything extra we need to do, you know, our friends and school board directors?
To, to support the school, if you can show up, just to be a presence there.
Correct.
In the morning, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
What time?
Seven to seven thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just wanna piggyback off that and say, yeah, we, I actually was talking to Mr. Chicago too about it. Um, and Mr. Corkery and stuff, um, we really need parent support out there, like, I can't state that enough, um. You know, school, definitely school has changed in some ways, but the biggest thing is the, the common denominator is parenting has changed. So like, if anybody can get out there, we really gotta get out there and help support, because. That's what we're going through right now, we, they need to see adults out there, it's not, it can't be peer on peer, has to see, see adults, and. Maybe it may deter them from, you know, doing.
We don't need to see them get a record.
Well, yes, they're not getting, they're not getting arrested, but. We do have things that are going on every now and then, yeah, they're not getting a record, that, but that can happen.
They can.
Yeah. No, you're right, it can happen from stealing things.
Been involved, that's a little, you know, helping, you know, people, you know, with a sponge, it is fun sometimes, they lose. They can't get college scholarships, they found that it was on their records, sometimes the schools. Don't admit them, because they did something when they were teenagers, so we don't want to see that happen.
Yes, I, I agree, and parents have to echo that, you know, I really have to emphasize that. Parents need to echo, don't steal out of stores, like, that has to be something that kids understand. You know, um, I just wanna say that, I'll leave that, I'll leave that there, um. Any other non-agenda items? Okay. All right, um, announcements of future meetings. We're gonna look to announce the future meetings, property meeting, um, is November first, six thirty P M. Our policy committee meeting is November ninth, at six. Oh, six thirty P M, our education committee meeting is November eighth, at six thirty P M. Um, our, um.
My apologies for that.
Budget and finance. Meeting is November fifteenth, at six thirty P M. Um, the next meeting of the committee as a whole will be six thirty P M on November twentieth. And then also, our next bit, board business meeting is November twenty-seven, at uh, six thirty P M. Um, and our personnel committee agenda meeting, uh, is November twenty-eighth, on Tuesday, at six thirty P M. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, uh, we will adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned, thank you.